School committee meeting. First order is citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens who have comments? No. Okay. Tom, student representative report. Would you like to share what's going on?
Yes. So the football team has been bounce back big this year. They're still undefeated after their last win. And they've been looked really good on both sides of the ball offense defensively and been moving the ball really well, which is great to help keep them in every single game. The boys and girls cross-country teams had their league meet this weekend with the guys coming in second overall to Westboro and top runner Ryan Blueley coming in second. The girls came in fourth at the league meet with top runner Alexa Batez coming in, I believe, fourth or fifth overall. And then also as a makeup they had Grant Dunstable yesterday where the boys won and they took, I think it was like eight out of the top ten spots. And the girls unfortunately lost, but they took still took five out of the top ten spots. The band had their first concert this past Thursday, which was really exciting. Both jazz bands played really well and sounded great. The concert band, which I still play in, sounded really good too. We played this really cool African piece that sounded like the rainforest and all these really good rhythmic sections and percussion sounded really good. Also this Saturday was the UMass Band Day where high schools from all across Massachusetts go. And they go to Gillette where UMass gets to play and they go and perform at halftime. And so they did really well there and they got to play, I think it was, oh, they played Frank Sinatra songs. So they played New York, New York and My Way. And then also this Saturday was the first Model UN conference and that also went really well. And then the Club for College is a club at our school that focuses on community service and that type of stuff started a school supply drive for children in Malawi.
Wow. So the African songs that you said, is that, did you use the new equipment? You talked about new instruments.
Yeah. Yeah, they, I, we didn't use the new African drums. Those are for, we have like a percussion class that I think Ms. McCarthy's teaching the second half of the year. But they use all the, they use like the big bells that they use for like, I don't know if you ever any cost, like for sleigh ride they hit the bells and so they use those. They use like temple blocks, which are like wood blocks that sound really cool. They use the regular like marimba, I think, and everything that they could get their hands on and seem.
Great. Does anybody have any questions for Tom? Thank you very much. All right. Um, new business. We have a presentation from the high school green team.
Yes, and we're waiting for a student. I just talked to Mr. Kastner. So we're waiting for one of the students to arrive.
Okay. Do you want me to jump ahead?
Can we jump ahead?
Yeah, no worries. Bolton lease, Michael.
Yes, so we are, we have, have had a lease document, it's called the appendix A for the Bolton lease. It's relative to the nineteen twenty-two section of this building. So there's the nineteen twenty-two, the nineteen fifty-two, and the next one's seventy-two. And the Bolton, when we originally did this lease, was upstairs in the, on the third floor of the building. And so now they vacated that a number of years ago when they redesigned their municipal offices and renovated the Hilton building. So we are asking permission and I've been in conversation with the town administrator and he believes it will be approved by their board of selectmen so that we can have this as part of our lease, so that we can use that space and, and give some relief to our high school so that they can have sufficient space for either offices or instruction in the media center.
Do you need, what do you need from us?
Uh, we need a vote for you to approve this appendix document so that it can be attached to our lease.
Does anybody want to make a motion to approve the Bolton lease appendix A nineteen twenty-two wing?
I move, the school committee move the amended version of the appendix A, the town Bolton.
Thank you. And do we have a second? Kathy, second. Any discussion?
I have a question. Um, how much space are we actually releasing to in the Shova High School when they move up?
So ultimate, uh-
Square footage wise?
Yeah.
Um.
Beginning.
I would say it's about, it's about probably two hundred and fifty square feet.
Oh, so it's small.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
If that, that's probably generous.
And they move into what? How much space are they moving to?
Um, so they're moving to here. Uh, they would be moving into, um, well, I haven't seen a layout yet. So there are two classrooms up there, so it mirrors exactly what's here. So there are two classrooms and those classrooms would be about, you know, seven hundred and fifty square feet, I'd say, once here. So they're, it's about fifteen hundred square feet.
Okay.
Is there a monetary? Are we basically renting more or is it kind of gratis or what?
No, we don't, we do not, it's gratis. Uh, and, and, um, it's a, it's a pretty good deal for everybody. We have always taken care of the responsibility of the, um, of the, uh, energy costs. Uh, so now we'll be.
Great. Any other questions? Are those in favor?
Thank you.
Any answers? Okay. Communication protocol. Michael.
Yep, this is something I've been working on and then with some looking around, something that Nicole shared with us about a tool that, a page out of, I think it's Maynard's High School or Maynard District. Uh, this is just a, a way to talk, have people know how to get in touch with different people based on issues or concerns or questions. So it kind of mir- mirrors together the notion of several of our policies. You know, very hands-on, this is what to do first kind of thing, second, third, and so forth. So the preamble is there to, to explain, you know, what to you do and how to use it. The left-hand column is the topics, are the topics that, that I've, I've listed. Um, and then, um, district contacts by email and then, um, a district phone number so that they can get ahold of somebody here at the district to be able to, uh, reach out to any of the schools if that's something more that they need to do.
Oh, are these hyperlinked or something? Or the email address?
They, so it'd be difficult to hyperlink them because, unless I added every assistant principal.
Oh, no, no, I meant these, 'cause these have, um, the one with the-
These will, those will be hyperlinked. Yes, yeah.
Okay, great, okay.
Yeah, the signature.
Since you mentioned phone numbers, but I just see email addresses. Are you just gonna use email addresses?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I think we, I, I will add the school, the school phone numbers on here as well.
Oh, okay.
Uh, down below. Um, but
Okay.
We're now on a voice-over IP, so you, you can call our main number and get any school in the district.
Um, has everybody had a chance to review this?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got a question.
I have a question. It says that all inquiries should be responded to within twenty-four hours. So if you don't get a response from your first con- contact in twenty-four hours, do you jump to the next one?
That's what I would do, yes. Either that or nudge the first person that you contacted.
Right. Mark, did you have a question? No?
No, I'm good.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you need to vote on this or do you just want us to?
Uh, I just wanted you to review it. This is something that I've talked about. It's part of my, uh, goals. Um, so.
Yeah, I think it looks great. Yeah. It is.
This was the first reading?
Yeah, and this was, this was the Maynard link, 'cause I think I was the one that sent you that, but
Oh, it was you, okay. Yeah.
But that, I like this.
I, I had the verbiage at the top, uh, on a document that I was working on, but the bottom made it a little more clear. Um.
No, I think it's great. You have a position and then you give the, uh, contacts. So thank you for doing that. Okay, that looks good.
Mm-hmm.
So does this become part of our protocol package?
Yeah, we, we'll add this to our website, um, so that people can, for communication, so that people know how to contact people.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is different than first reading, second reading?
I'll put it on the parent's. Yes.
This is a different, right.
'Cause of, yes.
Yeah, 'cause it says protocol. Okay. All right. Um, let's go away. Um, MCAS subgroups.
Right. So as we've done in the past, uh, we kind of break down the series of presentations on our MCAS, uh, just because there is so, uh, there's so much data there. Uh, I have here today Patty O'Connor, who's our ELA coordinator, and Robin Benoit, who is our STEM coordinator, uh, filling in for Martina Kenyon for this first half of the year and certainly has, has risen to the occasion, both of them, uh, in very short order. So they're going to talk to the MCAS data very specifically to our subgroups. Trying to comment, uh, I think that was made at our previous school committee meeting. And I think what I'm going to share with you tonight is slightly different because we recognize, um, after looking at the slides we had in the packet, that a little piece of more information comparing our, especially our special education kids to data about special education was probably better information to have. So this, what I'm gonna actually show up behind this is gonna be slightly different, 'cause it has a few more slides, but the majority of it is the same as what you have.
Okay.
Uh, so we're gonna say. I don't know if you wanna come up here to the table? This is part of the original, so if you wanna go ahead and get started and just wait for it to warm up. There we go.
Um, yes. So when Patty and I started looking at the, the data and unpacking it, um, we had some questions that were guiding us as we were, as we were looking through it. And I think that they're important questions as we continue peeling back more layers, 'cause I don't think we've completely done that. But first is we wanna know the number of our students that are achieving proficiency and advanced standing on our MCAS. We want to know what progress were made, being made towards closing gaps, 'cause we have gaps to close, as you know. Um, and what achievement and growth can tell us about curriculum instruction and learning. And I would say that as we've kind of peeled back layers, we've gotten to questions one and two. I don't think we're really at the point where we can make, you know, really direct connections to curriculum and instruction yet in a, in a truly meaningful way. So really it's kind of focused on those first two questions.
What do you think it's gonna take to get you to answer question three? Need more time? Need more data?
Um, I think that, you know, we need, we do need a lot more time and we need to, as we did here, adding in more, you know, peeling back another layer to look more closely at those, at those subgroups and we need to kind of peel that back a little bit more and start to think about who are our kids? Who, you know, who's making progress, who are, who's not? What is their profile? Have they made pro- are they not proficient or is it that they're making lots of growth or are they making a little bit of growth? And we need to continue. And we'll, we'll talk about that as we go through the data as well. But so it, it's just another, another piece of the process.
Okay. So I'm going to talk about this slide. Um, and first of all, it's, I just wanna say hello and it's, it's nice to be here and it's the first time that I'm meeting you, so I just wanted to say hello before I jump into the presentation. So we, we tried to be very thoughtful and thought about what would be important to share. And so this particular slide we're looking at is really big picture. The state has determined that we need to hit a, a benchmark, they call it a CPI, of seventy-five. And as you can see from the slide, all our large groups have either met or exceeded the benchmark. But we have three subgroups that aren't quite there yet. And although we're making some progress, we're still not where we want to be. So I've highlighted the three areas that we're still concerned about and we're making plans to address. And those are the high needs group, the, um, the, um, special education group, and the economically disadvantaged groups.
Can I ask a question?
Uh-huh.
Or do you want us to wait till the end?
If, if it, sure.
Okay. So this is the aggregate. This is all students who took the test grades three through ten. But when you disaggregate it and you look by grade and by school, you get a, a different picture. And there are some, uh, grade levels where the target is met.
Hmm.
So that is, I would assume, an opportunity to look at how that happened and what the change has been since they implemented the CPI. Have you, I, I don't know if you could speak a little bit to that, because I think that, in my opinion, gives a better picture than everybody all come together.
I. And, and I agree with you. And we have slides we're going to show you by grade level. Okay. Good, good segue. Okay. Um, all right. So this first slide, as I indicated to you, the three, um, well, actually the four subgroups, there's not enough data with Title One to, um, you know, to draw conclusions. You have to have, um, twenty kids in a cohort in order to show data. So we have data on the economically disadvantaged, students with disabilities, and the high needs. And for those of you that may not be familiar with who are the high needs, they're the population that falls into one or more of the subgroups, including, um, they could be ELLs, they could be in Title One or economically disadvantaged, or they could be in special education, or they could be in all three. So that's, that makes up the high needs group. So as you can see, the highlighted areas are the areas that we're most concerned about. That's the proficiency level. So if you look at the first box, grade three, ELA, thirty-eight percent of the forty-two students, so there are forty-two kids in that cohort in grade three, thirty-eight percent were proficient. So, so that's how you would read that graph. So we're, we're concerned about that, but as Robin pointed out earlier, we have more information because what's happening in, with this graph is they're being compared to the aggregate or all the kids. So we wanna give you the whole picture. So we're gonna keep giving you more and more information.
And I think the other thing, particularly, you know, and again, as we switch to the, to math slide for this, this is really just looking at proficiency in advance. So it's just looking at their mark on that continuum of, of achievement. And it doesn't give us information about, um, kids who are growth. And it doesn't give us who's in that needs improvement, who might be really close, like almost there on the cusp. So, I mean, this was our, our first piece that we looked at. And then we knew we needed to go a little bit deeper and look, look at more information from that. But it does give us part of the story, because ultimately we want our students to, to move towards proficiency. Um, and again, you know, as with the ELA, um, results, we see similar results in math, that there are, you know, we're concerned particularly about our students with disabilities. But, I mean, I think the good news is for the most part, as, as we kind of moving through, you know, we're getting students by the time they're in tenth grade, you know, more students to proficiency and certainly as they're, they're moving along. But they still, we're concerned about them and we want to help them grow.
Sure.
So as we look at the next slide, we had to really kind of look at what is that difference between, what is achievement? And when we look at scores for achievement, what do they tell us about? And look at student growth and what does student growth mean in, in this case? So achievement, we're just looking at those four determinations of warning or failing. That, you know, failing would come in the tenth grade, but warning to that point, um, needs improvement, proficiency in advanced. So it just gives us information about those. Um, and then student growth is really, when we look at growth for a, a child, we're looking at how they, how much growth they have made in a year as compared to their, their like peers. So kids that are in a similar grade level, that have a similar MCAS history that they have. You know, so they're, you're kind of, you're matching them up in that way.
Can you talk about this one?
Okay, ELA. Um, and we decided to divvy up the slides by the content, so I'll speak to the ELA. The large dot at the top is where we fall in the Shova, that as a district, um, grade levels three through ten, we are in the upper quadrant. So, um, if you can visualize that slide as four boxes. So, um, there's the high growth, high achievement, the high growth, lower achievement, the low growth, low achievement, and then the low growth, higher achievement. So naturally, we wanna be in the upper right quadrant. The state is at the fiftieth growth percentile and they're about, uh, at, at a seventy-five percent achievement. So as you can see, this is a good news story. We're above the state in terms of achievement and we're above the state in terms of growth. And, um, just to give you a, a little background, um, average growth is between forty and sixty. Anything above sixty percent is exceptional growth. And there are areas that you will see where we do exceed sixty percent. So, um, this is the big picture again.
Similarly for math, we're, we're in a, you know, a similar place where we are above the state in terms of overall achievement and is above the state in overall growth. So again, that's a, that's a positive in the big picture.
All right. I guess I got ahead of myself, because I think I've already defined who the high needs students are and they are, um, you know, any part of the subgroup categories. And, and you can see they, they've been identified as students with disabilities, the, our ELL population, and our low income. And, and I want to be clear that the low income population, I know we have Title One funds that service children in Lancaster. However, we may have low income families in Bolton or Stowe and at the high school and their data is included in this. So when you see low income, it's not to be, um, there's not a direct correlation to Title One. Okay. So here is a look at the aggregate, which we're talking about the group. And that's the yellow at the top. Then the X is where the state is. And then our high needs subgroup is below the state, but within the, um, acceptable growth. Forty-something, let me see, forty.
Is it actually growth or is it percent?
There's two, there's two different indicators. So the achievement is one thing.
Mm-hmm.
And then the growth is something separate. So if you go back to what Robin had referenced before, growth is when they take the, um, students who had similar MCAS scores from the previous year in measure. So it's not unusual, and you will see this later in the presentation, that there's, it's possible to have high achievement in low growth. And it's possible to have high growth in low achievement.
But if I understand you, what you're saying is that they took all the kids that were in needs improvement, seventy, seventy-eight percent of those kids improved?
It's individual kids, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's by a child.
I, I'm sorry?
It's by a child, isn't it?
It, it is.
So you have one child, year over year, what is their growth relative to their previous year?
But this is an aggregate, right?
And when we're looking at it as a whole, we're looking at the aperture.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, so we're looking at everybody together in the Shova, which is the yellow dot. And then this blue is the, is our high needs population. What's their average growth look like?
And, and just so you know, there's some great resources that are YouTube videos put out by the Department of Education
Mm-hmm.
that, um, really explain it thoroughly. So if you wanted more information, that's a, an available resource to you.
Do you know, do you have that, can, do you have those at your ready, rather than us trying to fumble around looking for those?
Yeah.
We can kind of page together with all the.
Could you, could you shout that and just, uh, give us an, a, you know, a title for what each one is, so we know what we're looking at?
Yeah, I can.
That might help other people. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Um, the X on this chart is all the kids in the state, correct?
Yes, that's right.
Is there a similar, um, um, chart that the state provides showing where, uh, ELA high needs students are on a chart like this, so that we could, you know?
You ask the best segue questions. That's our next slide, isn't it?
It's not, it, it's not the same chart.
I just wanna keep things real.
It's almost like you're a plant.
I'm not saying anything.
No, this is great.
Um, this is really high needs.
Okay. All right. So, uh, what this slide represents is just what you pointed out. It's like groups being compared to one another. So they, um-
Do we have that in here?
You don't have that in, in the one that's there, but you'll get this one. This one, you'll get this one.
Oh, okay. I don't want this before this.
Right.
Yeah, I just, I don't wanna be looking at this if it's.
Right. That's what we added last.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Great. So, so as you can see, uh, the blue dot is our district. The red dot is the state. On the left-hand side is CPI, right, which means achievement.
Mm-hmm.
So as you can see, there are places where we're above the state with our high needs population
Mm-hmm.
and the grade levels are indicated below. And you're going to get this, um, slide presentation, so you can look at it more carefully. On the right-hand side is the student growth percentile. And as I referenced earlier, there are places where the growth is higher and the achievement's lower and vice versa. So, so analyzing MCAS data, it's almost as if they give you so much, it really is quite a process to analyze and to really pull some strong takeaways from. But as you can see, this is a, a helpful document. So you can see in grade six, on the student growth, how high we, the, the growth is extremely high. But if you look at the achievement in grade six, it's, it's, we're above the state, but not significantly. But the growth in grade six ELA should be celebrated.
And that's compared to last year's or you're comparing the kids that came?
Can, that's compared to the, the state, um, the subgroup of high need students statewide.
Mm-hmm. But the growth that we're celebrating is-
For those students. It's, it's compared to where they, it's looking at the-
Where they were there before?
Right.
Sixth grade.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Well, no, you're not, you're not comparing sixth graders to sixth graders.
No, but though, it, when we say sixth grade, it means those current sixth graders had that much growth from the year before.
Okay.
Like that's where they are. So you'll notice that the growth, um, graph starts at grade four, because in grade three you can't.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, they're taking it for the first time. So fourth, fourth grade is the first time that you see growth, um, show up.
So if you were to interview the sixth grade teacher, is she receiving the students a, at a certain level? Would she notice that? Because right now our kids are below the state in the fifth grade.
For growth, right? And for-
Uh, yeah, I guess in growth.
Mm-hmm.
So fifth grade is below the state, sixth grade is way above the state. And if, oh, I don't know if you guys figured out.
And it, well, and I, I, those are good questions. And that's why I say it's not really a, like, oh, we'll know tomorrow by looking at a graph. We have to kind of peel back another layer and look at it more closely.
So you're gonna end up coming back with more, is that correct? Or providing more? You're looking?
You mean an action plan or more data?
Well, I'd love to see an action plan.
So each of the principals is charged with knowing exactly who these kids are.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that's their work, is to develop the actual action plan specifically. Um, and that's their work, is to develop the actual action plans specifically to kids. So they're working on that now. Um, and so you should be hearing about that soon.
So when, so when the principals come, they'll be addressing these areas?
Right.
Okay.
And this is our dis- this is our data as a district as a whole.
Right.
So it might look slightly different from school to school.
Right.
Right.
Yes.
Uh, so I'm really gonna be impressed if you have a slide to answer my answer.
Oh, okay.
So, um, one of the ways to, to, to see real growth, and I understand how the, the state does it, you compare kids to other kids' population.
Yeah. Yeah.
But if there's a way to look at a cohort, so this, last year, the tenth, there were twenty-seven kids with disabilities in tenth grade. If you knew how many kids of that twenty-seven started in grade three and went all the way through, then you could see their growth. My guess would be that you'd see a lot of growth.
Yeah.
Have you looked at cohort growth?
We haven't gotten there yet. That's all, we haven't quite peeled back that layer yet, but...
Because it's good to see it sometimes, like at five and eight and then ten.
Right.
And then you can, when, 'cause when you compare them to everybody else, it doesn't look good. But when you ca- compare them for themselves, they really make significant growth.
Mm-hmm. Right.
So just something, so you don't have the slide.
I don't have the slides, so, so I hadn't gotten there yet.
Go ahead. Okay. Thank you.
So again, with, when we look at our district overall, I, you know, our, our district as a whole in the yellow dot, you know, we're, we're above the state in terms of, of, um, achievement, or above the state in terms of growth slightly. Um, but our students with high needs are below. So they're, they're below in achievement. They're still, they're right on that edge of kind of acceptable growth, but they're, they're a little bit lower. So, and really what happened is, is we started looking at this data, you know, as we started with that first chart with the yellow in it, we knew we needed to look deeper, and we've, and we've, we've made these slides, and we looked at them and we're like, well, we need to find out more about that group. And so that's when we went in and compared them to, um, others in their group. So the next slide is high needs for math. And again, you know, a couple of pockets, but overall, you know, we're doing fairly well, um, as compared to the state. And a couple there that we look at. But again, kind of in growth, we're, we're up and down a little bit more. You know, so again, that leads us to more questions to think about that piece. We wanna look a little bit more closely at the growth piece for our kids.
So as you're doing this, um, does, when you're done, s- 'cause you're just looking at the, the data, but the actual action plan's gonna happen through the principal, is there a correlation between the two at all? That, to...
Correlation between...
Well, they're, they're mapping everything and identifying spots, and then the principal is going to do whatever he's going to do. But is, is there, are you guys no longer connected with that at all?
I think that we are, we are to a degree, but I think, you know, as it, it, 'cause it kind of sifts down, we have to kind of look at, you know, who's in direct contact with those students in terms of, if you're making an individual student action plan and thinking about how... So it's gonna sift down through. I think we're, as a leadership team, we're all, we're all talking about...
Right. Right, we, we, all of this is shared.
So at this level, we're gonna be looking very specifically at curriculum issues, if there, if we feel there are curriculum holes, uh, so that we can talk to all the schools about that. At the school level, the principals will be actually looking by going into classrooms and talking with teachers about, you know, the instructional strategies necessary because of the way the student performed the prior year. So that's kind of the breakdown there.
But is it safe to say that in sixth grade, um, which seems to be high on both of them, um, that there, there's a lot of growth in the sixth grade, whether it's developmental or whatever, and then there's not as much in the lower grades, but in the state, the state's pretty even? So, um, I'm, I don't, it's, it's kind of an odd picture.
And that's why, and I think that, you know, just to reiterate, you have to ask more questions, and they're all good questions when you look at it. 'Cause we're look, we're doing the same thing. We're looking, well, what's the pattern that we see here? But I, I think that we don't wanna jump to causality without fully unpacking, you know, you know, digging deeper into those questions.
Mm-hmm.
But they're all good questions about it, 'cause we saw the same thing. So for instance, if you look at sixth grade for our, for our achievement, we're actually below the state in terms of our achievement, but we're above the state in terms of our growth. So we're, we're not performing quite as well, but we're, we made more growth with that group, so...
Yeah. So you, I, I guess I wanna know, your involvement, is it just in analyzing the data, or are you actually actively involved?
Well, I think in the end, at the end of the day, the Department of Teaching and Learning translates into working with teachers about what happens in the classroom and making decisions about performance and working with teachers with that, so. But this is just a piece of it.
Part of, oh, part, part of my role is to be a part of the classroom walkthroughs.
Mm-hmm.
And then I also meet with grade level teams, and I also meet with principals. So there's a lot of communication going back and forth.
Okay, seems stable.
I, I view us taking a team approach.
Okay, I wanna stop for right there. Uh, we had a question, might as well.
Well, it's more common, if I could briefly, I mean, I've been teaching a lot of years and I've looked at a lot of different cohorts of students. And, and right now, um, for example, I feel that the current junior cohort that we have, um, I, it may have something to do with some of the kids and people in this room. Uh, but the current junior cohort we have is extraordinarily strong. I taught a lot of them as sophomores. I'm teaching a lot of juniors this year. Um, and, and that just happens from year to year, for whatever reason, um, you have stronger groups and, and weaker groups. When we're looking at something like, uh, a high need subgroup for math, these are relatively small numbers of students that we're comparing. Uh, and it may be that the nature of the needs of students in the fifth grade as opposed to in the sixth grade are simply larger. Um, and so especially when you have these relatively small numbers of students, I would be cautious about drawing too many conclusions, uh, because simply some years, regardless of what you do, um, you're gonna have higher scores just because of the cohort of kids who are in there than you might have the following year. It's just a pattern that I haven't figured out how to solve, so.
Okay. So, so, um, how much more of this, 'cause I wanna...
Um, maybe more slides, sure.
I don't wanna rush it, but I... You want...
Yeah, how many slides do you have?
We have, we have, um, our two other groups that we wanna make sure to talk about.
Okay.
Um...
Yeah, did you have a question?
I, I have two questions, but I can, I can wait on, on this, too.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, let's go back. All right. Um, all right. So this is the, the slide for the, uh, students with disabilities. Um, this is an area of concern. As you can see, the achievement is low, and the growth is average, but we would like it better. And if you were to compare the ELA disability status with the aggregate, you can see there's quite a discrepancy. So, um, what we wanna do is share with you the next slide that looks at the achievement and the growth. So as you can see, it's similar, that there are places where we're above the state with certain grade levels, and there are places where we're below the state with growth.
Okay. Similarly, in mathematics, only at this point, we move, you know, slightly into that low growth place
Mm.
where we don't, we don't really wanna be, we're, we're straddling that line, um, for our students with disabilities. And again, when we looked at this, particularly with this subgroup, um, just the nature of being a student with disabilities means that you're, in, in some ways, to qualify, you're not making the progress that you, you would make. I mean, there, there are some challenges there. So this group in particular, we felt it's really important that we look at how we're doing, um, as compared to similar students across the state. So again, we see a pattern that we keep seeing over and over again, where there are places where we're above, and there are places that we're, you know, right at the level of the state or, or below in terms of achievement. And our growth is, you know, there's not a clear pattern of growth, which we would like to see a better pattern of growth over time for our students. So again, we need to dig deeper with questions for that.
Okay, the, the next group would be the, um, economically disadvantaged. And as you can see, the gap is a little closer here, where, uh, the growth is within the range and the achievement is close to, uh, what is the achievement? Uh, sixty-eight percent. So, um, it's, this subgroup is a little bit stronger than some of the other subgroups. And for the ELA section, um, for the most part, in, actually in all grades, we're above the state in terms of achievement. And the growth data, do you wanna explain that?
Um, we, the growth data by grade level isn't available for this group, because I, and I'm not sure the exact answer to that. I think it's because our, it changes, so it, it's not there. It's kids who move in and out of that status, or they may move out in and out of our district.
It's not... Yep.
But our overall, and they're, and it's not a big enough population, so overall, we're at the same level of growth as the state for that particular subgroup. And again, similar, similar picture, where math, we're, we're almost right there with the, with the state as a whole in terms of growth and achievement, and pretty close to where our, our larger population is. And then if we look at...
You wanna stop here and maybe add, and, uh, because it can always come back.
There's actually three more slides.
Three more slides?
Yeah, it, it's, we're right near the end.
Okay, let's, let's post through the slides, so we can get to the question.
Yeah, it's, it's just, it's, it's not pertaining to one particular slide.
Yeah.
That'd be great. Okay, so let's post through the slide.
Excellent.
So we're seeing the s- the same pattern that, that the subgroup is doing pretty well.
Right.
And in this case, our district growth for the subgroup is slightly above that of the state.
So in summary, um, there are, there are areas that we need to work on. We, we know we need to work on the subgroups. There are some areas where the subgroups are doing very well. Um, but in terms of our general, uh, scores, we're above the state in most everything, and we have pockets of excellence everywhere. So that's something that we want to keep in mind as well. And as far as an action plan, we're collecting the data, which we've collected. We, we've done a lot of work around analyzing, and now it's time to put all of this into action.
Mm-hmm.
So this is where we're at.
Okay. And Neil, you have a question?
Yep, so I actually have three, and I think, hopefully they're short ones. Um, so for instance, in the math situation, where, um, there were some disparities between, um, well, actually it was the growth, uh, situation.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you're creating the math pilot, for instance, uh, for the curriculum. Are these things that obviously you're, or you're taking a look at to see if there's correlation? Excellent. Um, I just, I'm just trying to understand the process.
Did you like that?
Um, uh, so MCAS results versus, um, versus school grades, do you guys ever take a look at that and just, um, you know, see the correlation? When you say, like, needs improvement, for instance, like, where are the kids' needs improvement grades-wise versus, you know, being at risk? And when you're identifying the at-risk slash failed kids, um, are you including maybe the, a bottom portion of the needs improvement who could easily slip into that situ-? I mean, do you identify them and then kind of carry them along in the same path, or, or how's that work?
The at-risk kids had, are, I, have been identified. I work with the literacy specialists,
Mm-hmm.
and I've asked them to look at their actual caseload and look at the actual kids that they service and really go through and understand where they're falling down and what standards they're not meeting. And the principals have been charged with doing the same type of work, so we're, we're being very proactive about it.
Okay, cool. A- a- and so is there a hard stop between that needs improvement, though? And, you know, I mean, you've got a, you've got a division line between at-risk and needs improvement. So does that same process cross the line into, like, a bottom tier of the needs improvement to proactively address
Absolutely.
maybe the children that are sliding?
A- absolutely. And we're also looking at the high needs improvement to, to look at what need, what needs to happen
Mm-hmm.
in order to bump them up into proficiency. Some are right on the cusp.
Okay.
So you're scooping.
Absolutely.
Right, so they're going aw- awesome. And then the last question I have is with regards to the, the, um, the, I, I know that, I think it's disabilities growth or, uh, this, the, the S P E D testing has been, has been a challenge uh, for year after year, if I recall. Um, and I'm just wondering if, uh, you, has, is, do we have a comparison with resources versus results as far as districts, com- you know, like, um, multiple districts that are spending the same amount or have the same amount of resources versus the results that we're actually getting, uh, for the students? Are, are we looking at it that way? Like, is somebody else doing something maybe a little different? They have... I don't, I'm not pointing that to, to really...
Well, I, I'm, I'm wondering if you're...
And I'm not trying to break it down to a cost figure, I'm trying to...
No, no, but I'm wondering if you're asking about, have we looked at districts that have had better success with their subgroups and what they're doing?
In compar- we, yes, with comparable, 'cause I, we, i- as a district, we, we, we spend a fair amount on, like, S P E D education. And I guess if, if, and without turning into, I, it's hard not to, but without turning into a dollar figure or anything like this, um, are we getting the best results for what we're spending, I guess is what I'm trying to say, comparing the district to district for, you know, maybe they're spending a little bit more or a little bit less, but getting better results?
So I'm wondering if the, if the question is, um, is the per pupil expenditure
Mm-hmm.
for special education versus another district? And I, is, is that...
Mm-hmm.
And the results, uh...
And the results, the, the results that are correlated, not, you know, 'cause the spending has, I mean, that's, that's irrelevant.
And the results.
It's the results that we're... So is there, is there a connection between the two, I guess is what I'm saying? Do we, do we examine that and compare it to other like-kind districts?
We, we haven't, but...
We have not done that, but what we have done is investigated and visited schools that have done better programmatic, uh, so we've looked at their programs.
Okay.
So for example, one of the changes that we've been making is a, a grade level edu- uh, special educator, three through eight.
Okay.
And we've made, we've been making that transition to our budget process and so forth, and we, we hope to start seeing th- those results because that's, that's pretty, uh, uh, similar in the schools that we looked at for comparative data.
Okay. And thank you for, thank you, and thank you for rewording my question, 'cause I, I don't want that to come off the run of all my...
Well, I...
You gonna check that one off now?
Yeah.
There you go. All right. Does anyone have Mark?
I have one question. I wonder, um, since you're comparing the special or the people in needs or challenged to statewide averages, um, have you taken a look at, you know, what are the statewide averages for that particular population? I think that might be interestingly instructive. Are we doing better than the rest of the state handling this particular kind of population? Um, perhaps, perhaps not. Um, so it'd be interesting to know, recognizing that we want everybody to be doing great
Of course.
and, and at average or better than average, but it'd be, I think, instructive to everybody to get a sense of how we're doing versus the entire population state that's dealing with those kinds of people.
Well, and I think that that's where you go back to those slides that had the red and the blue. Because it wasn't necessarily a report that was readily avail- available to us.
Right.
It's one that we had to go in and poll and create, poll data and create those, those graphs. It wasn't a, you know, a report that was already there, so.
Right.
It's by subgroup, state sub.
Right, so that one is the data's compared to subgroup, so we know...
So, yeah, but that red, that blue is compared to the state, not that subgroup.
Right.
Right, that's, that's what we recognize late, that we just really figured that that was a more meaningful comparison
That's a particular graph, yeah.
rather than just, just compare it to everybody in the state.
Right. Right.
So those, um, non, um, what am I gonna say? So these, these are our kids, and that is the state subgroup for that particular group.
For that particular population.
It's the local population.
So that's what we know.
Right.
So we, we feel this is very informative for us.
Yeah.
Okay, so next steps from here, Michael.
Um, so the, we'll be looking at it for curriculum suggestions, and obviously math is a big, you know, area for us, but also science, because we'll be looking at curriculum, uh, for science as well. But the, it's really at the school level in terms of, we want our, the principals to follow up with their educators, and they'll be, should be working with the literacy specialist, should be working with the math specialist, uh, to make sure that we're tracking those kids as well. Um, so our action steps are continue to track that group of kids. Uh, also, each school is charged with looking at their, um, remediation model, so they have a, right now we call it PLUS. Uh, but there are things in the works in terms of making some adjustments to those, reflecting, you know, what they're seeing as needs for kids.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Now, I'll send, I'll send you the YouTube video that I thought explained the growth model, so just to...
Thank you.
That'd be great, and then we can get that up on the site for other people, not just us. Great, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Get that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Um, I guess we're ready for the green team. All right. Tell us who you are. We know Mr. Kastner.
Hi, I'm Paige Barron. I'm a junior at Nishoba.
Hi, Paige. What, what year are you?
I'm a junior.
You're a junior.
Yes.
So, so hi, I wanna thank each of you for, uh, taking the time to listen to this presentation. So my name's Tim Kastner. I, I wanna start out actually by, um, specifically thanking Michael and Dr. Graham for helping to make a part of this program that we're gonna be telling you about possible. Uh, two years ago, actually, it was really three years ago, Michael approved for me to take a semester-long sematical. Uh, two years ago, actually it was really three years ago, Michael approved for me to take a semester-long sabbatical. Uh, and the grant that I'm gonna be telling you about, um, is, is something which grew directly out of the work that was done during that time. And I know sometimes when there's tough budget times, um, you know, looking at something like sabbaticals, are they a good use of, of resources? Um, I mean, in this particular case, there is almost an equal amount of money coming back into the district that would've been invested in my sabbatical. And we also got, the person who had, was my long-term sub, has become a permanent teacher who is an outstanding teacher as well. So it's sort of a double bonus there. But, so I wanted to thank Michael for that and I also wanted to thank, um, Dr. Graham for the support that he's provided while applying for this grant, so. Uh, and Nick Mustasi was supposed to be here to present, but unfortunately, um, something came up and he wasn't able to make it. So if you can have the next slide, please. So in, in terms of key questions that, that are guiding this, um, that I've been thinking about, how can we develop viable partnerships with groups in the local community? I think the more that, um, we can connect the schools with what's going on in the community, uh, both the more support we can develop from the community for the schools, but also a lot more authentic experiences are made possible for students. Uh, and then how do we engage students in real-world experiences, develop 21st century skills and prepare them for upcoming environmental challenges? And I have to apologize, uh, I, sometimes I'm a little bit of a contrarian. Uh, so when the, the big push nationally was for 21st century skills, I helped to develop a new project which was called 19th Century. And as it turns out, if you look at new patents per percentage of the population, the 19th century was far more innovative than the last 60 years have been.
That's interesting.
Which is, which is interesting to think about, but in terms of patents per person, uh, it's actually different. Uh, and then just a couple of things from the, um, the mission statement and core beliefs. Uh, so the mission statement includes the idea of fostering and sustaining educational services that support, enrich and extend our curriculum for all students. And also the notion from the core beliefs that our communities are resources. And so the actual, uh, grant that I'm gonna tell you about is a partnership with a group headquartered out of Lancaster called World Farmers. Um, it's led by a woman whose name is Maria Marrera. Uh, her children went through the Neshoba system, graduated in the 1990s. Uh, she herself is an immigrant, uh, and has been operating a dairy farm for a very long time in Lancaster. And about 30 years ago, uh, she started a program called World Farmers and Flat cement or Farm. Uh, and you can read the articles which I sent, which give a little bit more detail, but the, the thumbnail sketch is that she provides farming training to recent, usually refugee immigrants to the United States. Uh, so many of them are able to grow the types of vegetables that they're familiar with from back home. She teaches them about what's often a very different climate to grow vegetables in here. Uh, and also provides training in accounting and marketing and other things along those lines. Uh, and I've also found that most people don't know what Flat cement or Farm or where it is. So if you drive from the high school, which is on the Google image there, west on 117, uh, right bef- as you're going through Bolton Flats, right before you reach the Nashua River, uh, there's some farm fields on your right, uh, and that is Flat cement or Farm right there. So it's actually very, very close to the high school.
I wondered what that was.
I saw people working there.
Yeah, and so the, the next slide just shows, uh, some of the images off their website, uh, of some of the crops which are being grown there to give a sense of that. Um, and I also sent some links to a couple of other things. There is a, a group of scholars, the one whom I'm most familiar with is Brin- is, um, Brian Donahue, who's actually a history professor and farmer from Brandeis University, uh, that have put together this document called a New England Food Vision. Um, and these are some people, some really innovative thinkers who are trying to think about, how can we grow and produce more food locally? So if we're concerned about droughts out west, if we're concerned about water supply issues, all sorts of things like that, then it would make sense to grow more food closer to where people live. And so they have what I think is a really ambitious vision of by 2060, trying to have 50% of the food for New England actually grown in New England. Uh, and so there was a link for that, so that just, it provides a little bit of a context. Uh, the average age for farmers in Massachusetts is not young. Uh, and so part of this is also of what they're doing at the farm is training a next generation of farmers who's coming into the country with farming skills. Um, and then the next slide just references a book which I looked at during my sabbatical. Uh, this is coming in part out of some work being done in the state of Vermont, but it's called Rebuilding the Food Shed. Uh, and talking about ways in which, uh, food systems and food supply can be relocated. Uh, and so some people look at this in terms of food security, some people look at it in terms of supporting local economies, uh, having more diverse local economies. So, so there's a lot of people thinking about these types of issues and ways of solving them. Uh, so the, the grant itself has six different partners. I already mentioned Maria Marrera, she is the leader and founder of World Farmers. Uh, so the other partners involved with this, uh, the University of Massachusetts Extension Program is going to be providing some training in prop and pest management for the farmers. Uh, Growing Places, which is a group, um, that's actually led by a former Lancaster selectwoman, Joanne Foster. Uh, they do, uh, what I think is really impressive work, helping low-income families install raised-bed gardens and provide gardening mentors for them so that they can become more food self-sufficient. Uh, and they're gonna be working with the immigrants, uh, in a variety of different ways. There's a group out of Washington DC called the Rural Coalition, uh, and they're gonna be providing some str- training and looking at what's going on with this program in terms of best practices which can be replicated. Uh, and one thing that I wanna note here is that World, World Farmers is actually a national model for how to train immigrant refugee farmers. It's something that, I mean, this is a grant funded by the United States Department of the Agri- of Agriculture. They have funded a number of grants, uh, with this organization before. Uh, and so there are people looking at this in terms of how can this possibly be replicated in other places? And I just met with them yesterday and as they were talking about it to some other groups, I said, "Well, how in the world did you get a school partner for this? This is so exciting." Um, and it turns out it's because Maria and I knew the same person who connected us. Uh, but, but so I think there's a lot of possibilities out of this. So the Lancaster Community Center is going to be doing some work with publicity and business training and the Lan- Lancaster Agricultural Commission are gonna be providing space at, at the Lancaster Farmer's Market and providing training as well. Uh, so what this means for this school district is that we will be receiving from the USDA through World Farmers $15,000 a year for the next three years. Um, our match is going to be 80 hours of volunteer time, so this is not costing the district anything. Um, I'm, my assumption is that most of the volunteer time will be provided by myself, but to the extent that other teachers get involved in meetings, uh, that can count as well. Uh, we are going to have for the three summers of this program, summer academies, uh, where teachers will be working together across curricular lines to design, uh, some curriculum around local agriculture, healthy eating, immigrant communities and things like that. So we already have some interest from the foods program, from the health program, from science teachers, from English teachers. Um, and I'd really like to see a link as well with the world history program. Uh, because here's people who have come from all over the world and are now right here in our community. And some of these folks, uh, if you read the articles, have under, have lived through enormous hardship. Um, and yet have, have developed resilience, have developed, uh, determination to keep going as, as a result of that. And, and one of my real hopes is that, you know, some of the students who are getting involved get to develop relationships with these folks and there's some real-life lessons that could be taken away. Uh, so there's the curricular aspect and then there's money to pay for student summer interns. Um, and the basic idea is that they would provide marketing assistance, they might accompany some of the farmers to farmers markets, provide computer training. Uh, we've talked about some ELL instruction. Uh, when I was meeting, uh, with the group yesterday, they actually said that they have some needs for, uh, computer ed- for video editing and filming. And I said, "How wonderful, we have a video editing class at the high school and some really advanced students doing some pretty incredible work." Uh, and so, you know, to me, to get some of those students, pair them up, you know, they can help with the video editing, they can then put this on college applications, produce programs, um, et cetera. So I think that there's a lot of really exciting opportunities out of this. Um, and now Paige is gonna talk a little bit about the green team and some of the work that they've been doing, so.
This is a group photo of a few of the members out at the courtyard at Neshoba. We planted a lot of different plants out there that would help unify the school and make it look a lot better. So hopefully it'll turn out well in the spring.
Bless you.
Um, some of the core things that we do in Green Team is we try to really involve the school and get a lot of the students to participate. We have a lot of different activities that we all do and we tr- pretty much have the school talk about it all and get very, very involved and so that the need for the Green Team comes across in all of school life. Some things we do are recycling. Um, we usually do that on activity periods, but some other times do. We do planting like in the picture at the courtyard and we also plan Earth Day activities, which that is very popular for the school and everyone's very involved for that. It's a fun, fun day. And some things that we were thinking about doing were to install, we fill the water bottle station at the high school. Um, we talked to National Honor Society and they were definitely, eh, like they wanted to help us with that too. And I think it could be really profitable and helpful for a lot of the students there. Um, we also wanted to create a culture of sustainability where students and staff make environmentally responsible actions in daily, in their daily habitat. So should I throw this paper in the trash or recycling bin? Just like always have that conscious in the back of your mind, ask those questions to be involved. Um, we also want to reduce electricity and promote the com- um, composting in the cafeteria to make it more economically friendly.
And if I could add just a couple of quick things to that as well. Um, so first of all, in terms of the refillable water bottle stations, the National Honor Society had actually raised money two years ago, uh, to, to install a refillable water bottle station. And at some point in the process, it sort of, it, it broke down. I don't know exactly where that was. Um, but this is, this is part of why I was hoping to share some of this with the school committee because obviously I, you know, issues of budget are significant concerns. Um, and, and at least my understanding that, that there's been some concern about the refillable water bottle, um, stations be specifically around the question of, well, the, the school lunch program sells water bottles to students and that becomes something which in effect subsidizes the school lunch program. Um, and, and, and if, if this is incorrect, please correct me, but, but there's, but, so the district to some extent has a financial interest in selling the, the water bottles to the students. Um, and, and I certainly understand, you know, you want, you know, you want balanced budgets, you don't wanna charge more than you need to for school lunches, the district doesn't wanna subsidize lunch program. There, there's, there's issues there. Um, but, but to me, as I think about it, you know, we are more than anything else an educational institution. And, and I've heard from students who go off to college, uh, where there's a very different environment around these types of issues. There's refillable water bottle stations everywhere, um, you know, there's composting in the cafeterias, there's, there's a lot more of these types of programs. Um, and so there, there actually is money sitting in the National Honor Society account right now that would provide at least the bulk of the cost. And there's some Green Team money that could provide more, I don't know if there's some facilities funds. Uh, but I did wanna bring that up. And on the electricity usage thing, um, I've attended some conferences around these issues over the last few years. Acton Boxborough actually hired someone specifically as sort of a electricity czar. Um, and, and actually Senator, Senator Jamie Eldridge has in the past, I don't know if this is current, proposed legislation that would fund for towns or school districts for the first two or three years, similar positions. Uh, the idea being it's not that hard to actually save the cost of the salary of this person. I mean, if you look at, so the $682,183 is the line item in this year's budget for electricity for this school district. I can tell, and, and a lot has, a lot of good work has been done around this in the past. Uh, but there are all sorts of lights that are on that aren't always being used. There's, you know, perhaps phones being charged that don't need to be. There's, you know, there's, there's a whole series of things which if, and, and the real issue is not the technology, we have the timers and things like that. The real issue is the culture of turning the lights off and not using them unnecessarily. Um, and so if you can reduce electricity use by 5% or 10%, that's a massive dollar amount in savings. And so one of the things we've talked about, you know, and, and I know my dad had this conversation with me, I don't know if any of you have had this conversation with your children, uh, turn the lights off, not my money, you know, and so that's, that's an issue.
I've had it spooked a few a lot.
But, but if, if there's, if we can find a way to measure concrete savings in electricity usage, could that money there, in some way, some of that money be reinvested in, in student programs or student initiatives so that there would be more buy-in to the actual compliance? So I, I wanted to sort of bring that up as an idea, I don't know if it's possible. But, but in some ways, you know, the, the incentive system, whether it's competitions between schools or hallways or, you know, those types of things I think make buy-in more likely. And when you have a dollar va- value that high, it doesn't take a big bend in it to be able to bring that down. So that, that was what I wanted to say. Go ahead.
So a main question is how can the school committee help? And, um, we've put together a lot of ideas, um, three things mainly that you, we could provide support for sustainability and initiatives. Like, the real question is do we have, do we value short to- short term, excuse me, financial goals or teaching long-term sustainable practices? So we wanted to ask you guys that. Um, also to consider ways that the district can model environmental responsibility in our decisions, buildings and grounds to make it better. Um, and solar panels on the roof to offset electrical costs, if that'd be possible. Um, if the environmental issues are one of the greatest 21st century challenges, should we promote sustainab- sustainability across the curriculum? And those are a lot of aspects that we are, gonna have you guys consider. And something really interesting in the news, in the world news, that we came across was that in 2015 is likely to be, likely to be the hottest year ever recorded, which is kind of self- justified, the summer was very, very hot. Um, but also the Hurricane Patricia was the strongest storm ever recorded in western hemisphere. I'm sure you guys heard about that in the news. Um, and all the fossil fuels that we burn leads to the melting of the ice on the planet. And so the current rate of increase of the overall heat is going to be substantial in 2021, 2050. So, I mean, it may seem like a long time away, but it's really not. It's kind of knocking at the back door, maybe not in our lifetime, but we should help it for future generations. And seed productivity decreases by 6% with each one degrees Fahrenheit temperature increase. So if the world's already increasing in temperature, seed productivity is definitely gonna decrease substantially. And the world popu- population is about to reach nine, 9.7 billion people, um, by 2050, yeah, thank you. So not only is the population gonna increase, but our resources will plummet and we need those to help the world survive overall. So I feel like doing all these components can help that.
And, and just to add one quick thing to that, so, um, in 1800, the world population was 1 billion. In 1950, it was 2.5 billion. Um, so today it is 7.3 billion. So this is the latest UN projection is that we will add the 1950 population of the planet to our current population over the next probably 37, 38 years. Um, and the good news in all of this is that if in fact we continue to increase fossil fuel burning at the current rate and we melt all the ice on the planet, those of you who live in Stowe will actually have oceanfront property. So the value of that will go up substantially. But, um, so I mean, they're looking, I mean, if, if you melt all the ice, it's a 200-foot sea level rise and the Assabett River is, I think, 175 feet above sea level where it goes through Stowe, so.
All right, I'd rather go back and talk about how the school committee can help. Do you have more?
That's, that's the last slide.
This is great. Um, I don't know about the rest of you, but I'm like, hey, what do we need to do here? Um, but when you go back to, and thank you, Mr. Kastner, Paige, thank you. We love hearing from you and what's happening in the schools and it's exciting and I think you hit all the right emotional- And I think you hit all the right emotional buttons with this. Um, but when we talk about what can the school committee do to help and you mentioned a couple of things there, um, I don't know, and this certainly would come through, Michael. I'd love to see what your suggestions are. What's your plan? Do you have a plan? You know, you made a statement that, um, would we provide support for sustainability initia- initiatives? And do we value short-term financial goals or teaching long-term sustainable practices? And I'd say, well, what, like, you don't have to answer this now, I mean, take it away. Well, what would those long-term sustainable practices be? And then would there be some type of a cost to initiate that? And kind of do a cost benefit analysis, but in a, in a, in an age appropriate way, right? Um, let us know what you think, um, through Michael, through your principals. Um, and then, you know, consider ways the district can model environmental responsibility. You made a statement about, um, um, schools having contests. And I think that, that's a wonderful idea from, you know, on a number of levels, not just the cost savings. Certainly the cost savings, but the energy savings, but it's more, you know, community building and a, you know, really strong, um, skills that we should all have. So I think that's pretty cool. And, um, so I'll let Kathy talk because I know she's got something she wants to say.
Um, uh, great job. I think maybe the, the facilities department needs to be maybe part of the Green Team initiative or, or get a member on the board. Cause everything would have to kind of, it doesn't come to us. It goes through the departments and then up to us and then we see bigger numbers. We don't really see any smaller numbers. Um, we see, you know, what, they already squeezed it out and then squeezed it out again and squeezed it out one more time and then we see it. So I think the facilities team, maybe if we can hook them up with the facilities team. Um, other things, you know, I know, I have a child who was bent on getting rid of the styrofoam trays in the cafeteria and gave options to the facilities team to all the non-hot lunches, use paper bags. The cost is cheaper than the, than the tray, but it wasn't implemented, you know? So, you know, there's so many things that can be done, you know, with the facilities team. I think maybe hooking you guys up with them, cause that would all come to us. Is there a way we can see?
Absolutely. It hasn't built a meeting yet.
Yeah, I've, I've had some meetings with, with Bill Cleary and, and, you know, some of these conversations have been going on for quite some time.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I had some conversations with Bill Spratt, with back when he was the facilities director and involved with a lot of, um, cost savings through a lot of things he had done with energy.
For energy.
Um, and at the time when we brought up the question of solar panels, um, he had said that it didn't make sense from a, a cost perspective. Uh, but that was several years ago and solar panel costs have been coming down quite rapidly since then. Uh, so, so it may be that if you do, um, a new analysis. And, and I think, you know, certainly, you know, we've had some, we've had some preliminary conversations, um, with people in facilities around some of these issues. I think to the degree that, you know, the, the school committee in a sense sends a message that this is something that's important to us and we value. That, that, that can facilitate certain types of, of things. I mean, there's, there's, there's always in a sense more things to be done than there's time in the day. And so the question is what are the priorities? And, and if this is perceived by, by folks as being moved up a little bit on the priority list, then, then I think it then gets more attention.
Sure, I agree.
And so it's, that's, you know, the, the, that sort of setting of, of priorities is something that I think the school committee, if you felt moved, would be something that could be taught here.
Well, it makes, it's kind of appropriate for the three towns, right? Where we are and who we are and.
Have you reached out to any of the, um, the local, like, for instance, I know in Bolton, there's Bolton Local. Uh, and they work with, um, they, you know, they have the community guard in and, and I know, um, I talked with Linda King going back in the spring. And I know she would, I, I believe still really liked to be involved with, um, with the school. I mean, you have a lot of mentors, um, that you can tap into. Uh, it's, it's a pretty active, uh, organization and, um, I know someone like that, um, would probably be willing to, to partner up and see what they could do to help out with the school. Um, I also know that Massave, I had them out to my house to do a energy audit. I'm wondering if something like that could be done on a larger basis for the, uh, for the school itself, whether they recommend or offer grants to be able to, uh, to, you know, take care of some of the situations they identify. And then the last thing is solar panels. Um, I have a friend that's a, in a s- that, that's in alternative energy, uh, business right now. And he was talking about a really interesting model, which is kind of like you were talking about. They're starting to, uh, rent the space on top of buildings now, like in, in malls and so forth, um, with the, the solar panels. And so the solar panels get put in essentially for free. They're renting the space, but then they get the tax credits or whatever the energy credits, they're coming back. And that might be a situation if we couldn't afford as a district to put these in, that partnership like that might, might be something that would, uh, would work well.
Uh, th- those are all good points. Uh, I do have a meeting, well, I've met several times with folks in Bolton local and I have a meeting with them scheduled for about ten days from now.
That's awesome.
That's ongoing.
Any other questions, Lynn?
What exactly do you teach?
I teach US history, mostly.
So you teach history? So do you incorporate any of this into what, into what you teach or is it, is this just a passion that you have?
Um, I, yes, I do in a variety of different ways. So one, um, I've, I've worked especially over the last five years or so to integrate more environmental history into, into my history classes. Um, and, and just, you know, thinking about these issues, um, as environmental changes have taken place over various time periods can be very useful, uh, for students, I think. Uh, but also for the last several years, uh, I've done an assignment at the end of the year, which I can't remember exactly what I call, but it, it's something like twenty-first century challenges. And, and so, uh, it looks at a number of issues facing the United States today. Uh, some of which are environmental, some of which are economic, some of which are, you know, future debt load, all sorts of different things. And then I have students, um, sort of look at the history of the problem, look at what conservatives suggest is an appropriate solution, what more liberals suggest is an appropriate solution. And then have them suggest to the class what they would propose as a solution. Uh, so, so that does get integrated instantly.
So do you teach A- is this an AP class?
Um, I teach AP US history, but I've done this type of project, um, with all levels of my students that I teach.
So, uh, um, I guess it must be, it is a more practical application. So do they ever go out to the farm? Do you take them out there as a field trip to actually?
We, we have not yet, uh, but this, this particular initiative is just starting. So, um, how, how that will look for sort of the larger student body remains something to be worked out. Uh, but we're also having some conversations with the director of the new alternative education program to see whether or not there's a way we can connect that program, uh, to the grant and what's going on at the farm as well.
Well, cause there's a lot more homesteading and a lot of that stuff, so that would make sense.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you for coming in. And keep us posted, please. Okay, on to old business. Oh, the school committee calendar, that's, okay. You guys reviewed the school committee calendar. Michael and I went through and Kathy provided some input. And we are, I'm happy to report, we've completed all the things we said we were gonna do in October. And now we're moving into November and I wanna make sure that if there is anything we need to add to it or change on it, this, we're gonna go over every meeting and make sure that we are staying on track because each one of these items relates back to a specific goal. So keep me posted, if anything starts to fall off, um, we'll address it. Lynn?
Uh, so this is specifically for goal oriented things, but what about, um, items that come up? Or, uh, would they be different lists for that or would they get incorporated into this?
Item, these, these, remember when we had our goal setting session in August?
Yes.
So these were all of the things that we said we wanted to do this year. And then we grouped them in like groups so that we would have a focus. And then we took that list and we went to Michael and said, and what do you have that we need to be aware of? So that we kind of harmonized both of those lists and we're in sync and everything plays off of the district improvement plan. So this list is specific to the goals that we have.
I think Lynn's referring to the parking lot?
Thank you.
Subjects that we were talking about last week. Things, items that would come up, that there's a to-do list or something that we're kind of creating, but then we need something to sort and note it and then follow up on the, exactly the action items.
Cause they don't exactly fall into these categories, they're just.
The action items, so, so we really need to, I mean, you and I need, we need to go through that because I know you've kept a list and I didn't look at last, last one. I haven't looked at one, but I've looked at every other one.
It's in there.
Um, and what Lynn is referring to is when, when we're in meetings and we say, oh, that's a good thing, we need to do that. Or yes, we're gonna have that or we're gonna do this. Um, we need a place to keep those so that we go back to them and either decide we're not gonna do them, we don't have time or maybe it's not a pressing issue anymore, or maybe it is. Um, so I think we need to sit down and look at that list. I think you and I need to sit down together, scrub it and then bring it forward. And see other things that we can move off the parking lot. Yeah. Probably forgot something that you told me, I'm so, I'm sorry. Um, okay. Policy, policies, second readings. Kathy, are you covering for Nicole?
I guess so.
Yes, she is.
Then you need it. Okay, so if you open them up, we can see that these are the second readings?
Yes, that's what it says on the agenda.
Okay, so you can see the, um, if we start with smoking on school premises, um, we can see the, um, the changes that have been made.
Okay, so does anybody have any questions on this policy?
No. I, I have a question on the smoking. If this, if the student is determined to be in violation of the policy, um, there'll be a disciplinary action pursuant to the, the student discipline code. But with the staff members, it just says disciplinary action. I mean, is there a code for them also or is it just? It's just, don't do that again.
No, um, because it, it depends on where they are and other disciplinary issues, so.
First thing, second thing, all of the things.
Right, it says progressive discipline, so if there are other factors that they might be at a different level, but it'd be through progressive discipline.
Okay.
Good question.
Do you need us to vote on this?
Uh, yes, you can either do them all together or one by one.
Okay. All right, why don't we go through the others?
Yep.
If they have questions and then we can take them off.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, policy dissemination.
All right.
I think the biggest change had to do with just making sure that, um, folks knew that the policy manual is on the district website because when this was originally, um, adopted in two thousand and one, there wasn't the capacity to do that. They were paper copies.
Makes sense.
Okay, any questions or?
School committee staff communications.
Okay.
Nothing changed on this one?
No.
Okay.
Okay, that makes it, isn't it? And then the last one is administration goals.
Administration of organization.
The change in administration organization.
Any questions on that one? No? So you wanna vote on?
Please.
All right. Does, you wanna make a motion, Kat?
Yeah, I move that we accept the, um, policies, uh, smoking on school premises, policy dissemination, um, school committee staff communications and administrative goals, which has been renamed administration organization.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second. Second.
Neil seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole will be thrilled. Okay. Next on the agenda is our subcommittee reports. Mr. Jones for finance.
I had to do that.
Okay, thank you for that. Appreciate it. Mr. Jones.
Um, so it's some updates. Just wanted to respond to the question about buckets or categories that we've, um, set for ourselves. Approximately eight or nine categories we wanna be able to talk about or at least report back on. And they are basically revenue, fund balances and revolving accounts. Facilities, meaning utilities, capital projects, energy maintenance. Personnel, personnel benefits. Insurance and transportation, some more contracted things. On special education, both overall and out of district and transportation. And then catch-all miscellaneous for a variety of things that are not large but, um, might fit, might include outbound costs for charter schools, school choice, teaching and learning, technology and perhaps other things as well. So those are the major, major things we have something to say about and they pretty much follow from the major categories.
Are those reflected in the VIZIO?
Um, not entirely.
Not at all. It, it's very separate. It's the buckets of the budget versus the flow.
The process.
Right.
Got it, got it, got it. So.
Particular things we could give you.
Will you post that somewhere so that we can?
Sure.
Well, we, I just sent that over preliminarily. I mean, we haven't really, did you guys talk about it?
I think we can post it as preliminary.
Okay, yeah.
What we've talked about since the first meeting, it really hasn't changed, so.
Great, that'd be great.
Yeah.
We haven't necessarily filled in all of our dates, no, not at all.
That's okay, but again, this is gonna be an evolving, right?
At least, at least, you know, the categories. Exactly.
Yes.
All right, so, oh, you have dates. Well, maybe you want me to have those dates.
Some dates. We'll pass them along to you.
Thank you, and maybe we'll put them on the calendar. Perfect.
We don't wanna be too public about it.
It's all right, I'm not public. Yes, I am.
Um, so you can have, you can have this copy, um, but it does need a further addition.
That's okay, thank you.
That's our working draft. Um, and so just to, just to say some of the things we've done recently, um, most recently we had a, just an initial look at the personnel costs. That was the last meeting, week ago now, I guess. And personnel, we haven't actually had a chance to really discuss it. Um, and today we had an introduction on, um, some of the Fed costs and outgoing charter costs, um, through George. We don't necessarily have something to say about it right now, but it's on our queue to, to, to say as much, say something about that. Um, and then we did work out, um, a report to talk about just revenue in general and, um, where, what some of the facts are, at least as I look right at right now. Um, that I believe is on the website as a document. I can also hand out, um, the one-page memo that we put together. Um, does anybody want that on paper?
Lynn, do you need a paper copy? Or of the, uh, revenue discussion that Mark's about to launch into?
Oh, yes, I'll take one.
Thank you, I understand.
So this is just taking a look at revenue and the, and the sort of big picture. Um, not really discussing at all anything about expenses particularly. And the main news is that for many of the categories and line items for revenue, they're substantially similar to what they were projected to be substantially similar in our prelim- preliminary look for fiscal year seventeen as they are in the current budget year, fiscal year sixteen. And so given that that's kind of the basic foundation, there are some areas that we know are going to look different and they're, they're significant. And therefore it's worth understanding how they're different and, um, how they might have an impact on our thinking both for the revenues itself as well as thinking about school operations and how to come to a bottom line that, um, everybody feels comfortable with and can support and also can explain. Um, so one of the things that, um, occurred for the fiscal year sixteen, this current budget year, is that we have, um, pretty large appropriations, um, between the excess and efficiency fund and the school choice revolving fund. We appropriated two point seven million. And we know it's pretty likely that the receipts in both of those funds are going to be um substantially less than that, one point four million, more or less. And that gap between that is what you might call non-recurring funds, meaning it's not a supply of money that you can expect to see in twenty seventeen. And therefore, um, we'll be looking to either um find other sources of revenue or maybe looking at our expenses or some combination thereof as we compile, as the administration compiles the entire budget for um fiscal year seventeen. So that's sort of step one, about what's what's significant about um what's likely to change between sixteen and seventeen. And um so the, that's kind of the first table in my memorandum there, and the second table is basically, so what's the consequence of that? And we can see there that preliminarily, tentatively, um, it looks like appropriations from those two funds will be um about more or less um one point three million dollars less in fiscal year seventeen than fiscal year sixteen.
So I think it would be valuable before you go on to explain the function of the excess and deficiency fund.
Sure.
Because I think we're not, I I don't see these two, and it just could be me because I'm not a finance person, as typical revenue streams, um, that's one. And the second is they work very differently and they have very different functions.
True.
So rather than, you know, other people walking away thinking, oh, my gosh, you know, we have one point three million dollar de- deficiency, I think we need to put that into perspective.
Sure. So the excess and deficiency fund basically is the fund that any surpluses is dropped into at the end of the fiscal year and then certified by the state, basically saying, yes, you're allowed to drop um this money that we say is rejected. And therefore, um, it's known at the beginning of the fiscal year or a few months after the beginning of fiscal year, what you can actually use for, say, subsequent fiscal year. Um, so that that's a, can be a highly variable number of what is a surplus in any fiscal year.
And the function of that is to?
And it represents basically what is, what has been um been revenue at some point and perhaps may have been in the budget and has not been used.
So it's excesses that we haven't used that we can put in the parking lot.
Surplus. Sure.
Is there a percentage of the overall budget that we're required to hold the Z and D?
The maximum is five percent, so right.
And that's, that's one of the questions, that's one of the questions is.
The state maximum is five percent that you can.
Right.
Right.
But that's one of the philosophical questions that we all need to answer is what level are we comfortable at?
And we're not ready to have that conversation because we haven't actually talked specifically about E and D, that's on the agenda.
Right.
That's fine, yeah, that's fine.
Right, but certainly a question to be discussed and be considered as a school committee, most reasons.
Yeah.
So that's good, because I think that's, point of view is important, right?
Right, so for example, if we were at five percent of our budget in ninety three through year and we had a surplus, basically by statute we're required to um reduce our assessment in the following year, I believe, to the towns, by way of, as a method of returning that fund. Um, if it weren't used for some other purpose, um, which that might be, um, one or more con- converses that could be contemplated. Um, there are some school districts that have miniscule excess and deficiency funds, I find it pretty astonishing that they survive.
But 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 that's dangerous comment.
Alright, we're not, we're not gonna go into this conversation.
Right, so I'm saying.
That's a dangerous comment.
These are the extremes, you can have, and so much, you can return to the towns and you have, and you have very little.
Right, but we're just trying to do our report on what is our state.
Right.
So that's the function of it, it's basically, in in the municipal sense, it would be called free cash, but it has some restrictions as to how large it can be.
Right. So what about school choice?
So school choice, um, money that's received from um other towns and municipalities for out of district students that are in our district, we basically receive five thousand dollars a head for those, each of those um students. And that money by statute must be used for operations. You're permitted to not spend it immediately in the current year, get to put it into a revolving fund, which is what our school district has done for a number of years and will continue to do. Um, and then when you withdraw it from the, um, that fund, and we do that by appropriating it in our budget, we can actually draw down that fund. And once again, when it, when you withdraw from the fund, it has to go towards operations, it can't go towards building any loss of a classroom or um renovating our school.
So, so can I?
Um, and so, so that we know that that fund, the revenue from that particular source is going to be declining um somewhere, somewhere in the vicinity of seventy five thousand a year because we have a declining school choice population in our school. So, um, we have a population of around hundred and fifty, I think, now, is that close?
Hmm. How many in and how many out?
About a hundred and fifty in, about eighty out.
Right. Right, so.
And about eighty out?
Maybe, we haven't, we don't have the issue's numbers yet, so we can always.
Right.
So we have a hundred and fifty school choice.
So we're anticipating in twenty seventeen, more or less, population one hundred and thirty five, which turns into an income of six hundred fifty thousand. Um, in in the preliminary budget so far, we're c- administration is contemplating drawing down, um. Um, I'm sorry, drawing down six hundred fifty thousand, and I think our income is going to be, what is it?
And how many out, Michael?
Our income is likely to be five hundred and fifty.
E, perhaps, sometimes.
First, twenty seventeen or this?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
It's last year, we don't know the year.
So you're saying that in two thousand sixteen, E and D fund, we currently have one point six million?
Last.
For last year. We appropriated one point six million.
That's what we appropriated, that we took one point six million, or whatever, two point seven.
Out of there.
So we had about two point six.
And it left us with seventy one degrees as well.
Okay, one at a time, well, who's talking?
Me.
No.
Oh, who's talking? Were you talking?
No, I, I don't.
Do you may talk, you may speak?
From.
You may speak, I was asking a question, 'cause I just didn't understand this. So the one point six, we took out seven twenty five, and we currently have eight seventy five.
No, we appropriated, meaning for this, this fis- this fiscal year, this budget year, we said we're gonna take one point six million dollars out of E and D.
What'd that leave us with?
And that left us, will leave us with somewhere in the vicinity, assuming, assuming that we get um about seven hundred twenty five thousand, um. Somewhere in the vicinity of about five hundred thousand, six hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, so.
Um, so we're, we're, we're guessing the current estimate on the surplus for last year is about seven hundred twenty five thousand dollars.
Okay, but do, but we reduced it to five hundred thousand, I thought we reduced it to seven hundred E and D, what do we do, reduce it to E and D to?
Six hundred.
Six hundred. So we should have at the end of this fiscal year, one point one million dollars, right?
One point three.
Some points.
Three, maybe about one point three two five.
Right, right.
One point three, so one point three.
Two five, right, I mean, based on the estimates, one point three two five.
We applied for that.
We what?
We applied for certification of about one point three two five.
I don't know what that means, but okay, so.
It we had, it had, the number has to be certified by the Department of Revenue.
Oh.
The number we submitted, Mark's using the incremental numbers, what we started with, so to speak, it doesn't really work that way, it's easier to understand that way and we explain it that way sometimes. But it's really not how it works, but in order to understand it incrementally, it's easier to explain it that way, but what really happens is when we close out at the end of the year, we have to do all our closeouts and then we submit our certified amount to the Department of Revenue for certification. Usually it would be back by now, but this year they're, they had an early retirement program, so they, they said they were slower. So I'm not sure when it'll be back, but the number we applied for is right now, no, off the top of my head, somewhere one point three two five, one point three four oh, something.
And for clarification, how many times when you apply for something with the state, do they not certify the amount they consented?
Well, they always certify, they certify sometimes a slightly different amount. It does vary.
So.
How much of a variable is that?
Oh, it depends, it depends what the, what's, what's at stake, what the different things are, probably not much.
Okay, so what is the non-recurring portion of that?
Yeah, a hundred thousand's options.
Yes.
What does that mean?
So, in, at the end of this year, we're guessing, the estimate is about seven hundred twenty five thousand dollars is a surplus from last fiscal year.
Surplus. So.
So that's, that's the money that was put into E and D, and we are withdrawing through our budget one point six, so the difference between those two, that's the amount, that's the non-recurring part, at least in this, in this year's perspective.
So. So what we used to do is, what we used to do is we used to have one million in it, get about one million every year, and then every year just take one million out. So we kept one million, one million, one million, year after year, ten years.
I'm generalizing.
Right, I know.
Um, this year, we took the one point six, so we don't have that one million, so we're down lower, so we can't keep doing that.
Hmm.
Right, but we can't do that every year, we get that, but.
Right. Right. So in other words, those two right numbers added together would en- add up to one point six.
Which is what you have down in two thousand seventeen? Under excess and deficiency, no, you're not gonna appropriate that, well, you can appropriate one point six to five.
You can't, you don't have that much to appropriate.
Right.
Right, well, that was a one-trip deal, so are you saying here that we're going to?
Correct.
No.
No, that's what I'm saying.
I'm saying, yeah, you're just saying that's a very.
It's a one-trip deal, it's not coming back, that money that went out is not coming, not due to come back.
Okay. But we have one point three two five bill.
Well, we don't know that yet, it's gonna be certified.
We are guessing that will be the certified amount.
So we're not making any real true assumptions on what we'll take out, it's just, you know.
No, this is just a report out, we have a report out, we haven't gone into the school choice to look at, you know, the various aspects and, I mean, there's, there's a whole conversation to be had there.
You're just giving us a state of the state.
There's a whole conversation to be had about E and D.
Why are we gonna have that?
They're on, they're on the agenda, actually, for the financial subcommittee to to talk about, we have these in there, so.
So it, it's still with the non-recurring issues.
Sure, so, um, we had a, we we put into the E and D fund seven hundred twenty five.
Yeah.
That non-recurring part is the gap between what we spent, one point six million.
Yeah, so you can put difference, if you wanna put difference there.
So it's a difference.
So, so maybe that would help Mark, these, it's the titles of the columns, I think that's throwing Lynn and probably others.
Sure, why don't we just change the last one to difference?
Sure.
But it's, all you're saying is the difference from what we had last year and what we have this year, so you, what you're saying is that our E and D's lower.
This is the difference between what we took out and what what's was put in.
It's, it's as simple as that, seven twenty five is what we're expecting to be in the account, it was one point six.
Mm-hmm.
The difference between the seven two five and the one point six is eight seven five, right, eight hundred seventy five thousand, that's the difference, that's not coming back, is what we're saying.
But let's, let's clarify something, though, because this discussion's always dependent upon what part of the year you're in, right?
Mm-hmm.
Because this seven twenty five assumes that we're not at the end of the year when there may be monies that we're replenishing.
No, the, 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 the date of certification, the cutoff date of July first, the seven twenty five, which is an approximate number, is, is already in the bank. So, so the certification is the cutoff day of July first, so nothing, anything that happens this year will impact next July first certification. So the certification is, is a concrete issue, so to speak, at this point.
So what's in the account right now?
Well, what's in the account right now is two point uh two million dollars, because that's the last time we have a certification of July of, this is where it gets complicated, but essentially, that's why it's not really incremental like we describe it, it's really point to point. So the last certification we have is two point two million dollars, whatever it was, I can, I can look it up, around two point two million dollars. We then start with that, we then certify to the state that we have voted one point six million dollars for the purposes of appropriations, the F Y sixteen budget, but we have also had this change in fund balance v- versus our revenues and expenses during year F Y fifteen. And therefore, we believe as of July first two thou- is, is, I'm sorry, it gets confusing between fiscal years, July first and stuff like that.
I'm sorry.
As of July first two thousand fifteen, we believe our unreserved balance, free cash, E and D, whatever you call it, is this amount. They then go through our accounting and, you know, say yes or no. If we have a negative in a, if we have a negative in a um, like a revolving account somewhere or something like that, even though it's not directly attributed to the general fund, the general fund, we don't have this, but say we had a hundred thousand dollar deficit in our food services account, that number would be reduced, the state wouldn't certify as what we asked for. They would reduce any negative balances we have within the district, 'cause they wouldn't certify that money, because ultimately the district would be responsible for that money, so therefore that really wouldn't be considered unencumbered fund balance. We don't have anything like that, it's a very minor things, like twenty five dollars somewhere or something. So I think the number, to answer Neil's question a few minutes ago, will be right. Just for clarification, since we're talking in this detail, which I wasn't expecting, but I did look it up, we've applied for a certification of one point three three six six five two oh two. So one million three hundred thirty six thousand, six hundred fifty two dollars and two cents, we believe, is what we have as unencumbered funds. Again, that may change slightly, the state may look at it and say, oh, you accounted for this, you don't need to, we'll give you one point three four million. Or they may say, uh-oh, you didn't account for this, you may only get one point two nine million. I think it's a reasonable guess that will be between those numbers. So that is a number that will be available. Incrementally, it's about, if you think of, if you think of the increments of what you spent last year in the budget, what that left you with, and what we quote added back or replenished, you know, that's incrementally the way to think about it, but it's really a point to point certification of one number, and that number is the number it's getting.
And we're waiting for that certification.
We are, and it may be a while.
It may be a while?
Just because the D O R is out of our control, the D O R has sent other, sent out an advisory that they are slow in certifying free cash E and D because of their early retirement program.
Oh, right.
Surprise.
I mean, I would, they, they, I, I would suspect it would be in the next couple of weeks, but it should have been by now.
Clearly the wrong people are retiring at this moment, I think.
No, it's just a matter of the reduction of force, I guess, they get more people, they don't have that many people, they didn't hire the people back, I guess, or whatever. Whatever the case may be, I would have normally had it by now, I would have expected a couple of weeks, but.
So, so we led with E and D and school choice.
Yes.
And, what do you got at the bottom half of this page, Chris?
Um, so just, um, say the.
Thank you, George.
The middle table is, you know, lo- preliminary appropriations that are being thought about for those two accounts. You can see that they're one point three million dollars less than what's down for fiscal year sixteen, that's the lower right corner of the second table. So, um, the bottom part of the map will basically say is, hmm, one point three can be reduced because there are few areas of the, um, income is looking better than it did for sixteen. And therefore, um, that reduced appropriation would be smaller, it would be perhaps seven hundred forty six dollars less than, um, than fiscal year sixteen. So we're saying we, we have a bit of a gap in terms of our likely revenue, and um, it'll be more or less about seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. So that's where we stand right now, this might change, um, it points out that it'd be nice to have, figure out how to have greater revenue for the district, but also points to maybe thinking about, looking more closely at our expenditures as well, of which I'll make no comment about. Um, so sort of a state of the nation in terms of revenue, or at least part of our revenue picture. And it'll be a conversation that we revisit as we get closer to the budget, that people are trying to understand both total revenue as well as total expenses and the bottom line turns into.
Great. Thank you. Lynn?
So are you saying in the preliminary F Y E twenty seventeen local revenue changes, that you're gonna take, you anticipate that the regional transportation and Medicaid are gonna go up? And that you're gonna take that money out of E and D?
No, I'm saying that.
Oh.
We're likely to have less revenue out of E and D and out of school choice. And because we're expected to have more income for regional transportation than we did last year and ev- various other things, this Fed circuit breaker. The, the ways that we think that we're short on revenue is, is offset by these other increases.
Some things go up, some things go down, net-net.
So we have a big down, which is the one point three of those two accounts that we can appropriate from or are likely to appropriate from, we have some ups. And the, the difference between all that turns out to be, looks like seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in school will be short, at least as far as we're in hell right now.
So you're saying the budget next year is gonna go up seven forty six?
No, not what, that's not at all what he's saying.
We're reporting out on, on the facts of revenue.
Right.
So this is, so we're saying so far, what we know about this part of the revenue is seven hundred fif- seven hundred forty six thousand dollars less than last year. For this, this part of the budget, for this part of the revenue.
But this only tells a small part of the story, the, there's the whole operations of the district and expense and salary and on and on and on.
Right.
That's all preliminary.
Change.
And then there's certain topics that we're gonna have some conversations about, which are gonna be more philosophical conversations that people are gonna have to figure out. Things like E and D, things like, you know, additional sources of revenue down the line to pursue, as we know that certain things are. As we know, that certain things are favor- there's a horizon for certain things, and there's sun setting out. So what do we put something in place? We need to prepare. So there has to be conversations, but those are that's not what we're here to, and I can do.
Right. This is this is just a point in time, giving you an overview of where we're at right now.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
So partially to extend your answer to your question, um Lynn, so it could be, some of our choices are, um George and the administration proposed a certain amount to be appropriated from E and D. Maybe school committee thinks, well, no, we want to do a different amount than proposes. So that could be a discussion that we have um based on issues that we we care about in relation to the revenue um for the whole district.
And and you're talking about for the next year's budget?
For fiscal year seventeen.
Right.
And so we'll be having that conversation in in bits and snatches for the next three months, four months, more or less. And so we'll definitely be revisiting it, probably see that.
Right.
We're just trying to create base lines right now.
So it's my intent to try to clarify things, so you get a sense of future issues, so that they're not surprised you'll revisit them in the future.
Right.
And I would like to, you know, clarify where you have questions, so that it's not confusion for everybody.
Well, we need to start here, right?
For everybody, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, just one minute.
Right. Thank you. Thank you all.
So. One final thing to say, it's all subject to revision and change.
Okay, caveat. Thank you. Any other questions other than the sidebar conversations?
Is this getting posted? Is this getting posted?
It is posted already. It's on the meeting materials for the finance committee.
It is.
Do you wanna read the material somewhere?
It does say that, right?
It is.
Okay, right there. It's a bigger.
All right, moving on. Um personnel.
Okay, so report we haven't met since the last week.
Oh, no personnel report. Right. Policy.
Policy, we met today, and we had um first readings of graduation credit requirements.
That's right.
Um Dr. Graham and Mrs. Spack will be um meeting with the committee at some point to provide us with some additional information. Um the um policies relative to uh personal device and network usage and acceptable use of the internet are going to be reviewed by the technology committee to see if they have any input. And then overnight field trips to give that one to the nurse to look at. We believe in delegating.
Right, we're at yeah, we're having some conversations. Couple of questions and answers.
Yeah. And then we had, um I don't know, second, third, fourth readings on some of the other ones, student rights. Um these other ones will be coming to the school committee for additional um readings. The last two, approval of handbooks and directives, school committee review of regulations. I think that was it. Um we're waiting for Nicole to come back to the whole committee.
Great.
Did you say chemical health to the school?
I didn't say that yet.
Okay.
I didn't I I didn't say it yet. Do you wanna say it?
I'm creating a segue for you this time.
Okay, we're continuing.
Okay, thank you. And moving, um the chemical health uh policy, we're looking closely at, and I have to commend Neil for the research that he has been doing on looking at other districts to make something that is, um, yes.
What did I say?
No, we're just between Michael and Neil, they're doing a lot of research to try to change the terror it, so that there is um
Oh. Oh.
education, uh there might be a social justice aspect of it, and we'll come to that support.
What a great idea.
Students. Yeah, no, there's some districts are doing great things, and Michael and Neil have to read that.
Great idea. He's a researcher anyway.
But
He's a digger.
He's a digger.
Can I add to this?
No, we don't.
Yes.
Let him add.
If I recall, if I recall, no, sorry, listen to you. Uh if I recall.
Listen to anybody.
Like, were we gonna be sending this to um the high school uh school school council?
High school council.
Oh, Anthony was.
Get some feedback from them on on issues that they deal with. And the theory that I think we're kind of coming up with is that
Great idea.
the more stakeholders that we share with the creation of policies or the modifications, I think the better policy we're gonna create um or or modify.
Great idea.
And there's some good models out there. I think you referenced, was it Shrewsbury or Swanskyd?
Yeah. Swanskyd. Swanskyd actually is a really good restor- because we talked about restored justice.
Yeah. Yeah.
And it's the only one I can find, but I mean, there's I I don't know if this is a great model, but I think Michael's gonna follow up with the superintendent
Yeah.
um and kind of get feedback on that, but it's uh, you know, there's 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 stuff out there for sure.
Yeah, that's great.
Hmm.
Yeah. And thank you.
No, thank you.
Any more policies? I mean, that was like a laundry list, but that was kind of impressive.
No, we didn't.
You guys have been working hard.
I agree.
Um, Lynn, no.
Nope.
No space study report and no C P A C, and Nicole's not here. Michael?
Yes, um so we already had the MCAS presentation, uh just going through this. We have Foundations as one of our tools we use for teaching phonics and handwriting, uh as it turns out. Uh so we introduced it about four years ago with a pretty in- intensive uh training. We evaluated it last year. Uh we identified some areas that we wanted to retrain some uh our teachers, mostly because many of our teachers are new in those grades. So uh we're gearing up to do that training, hopefully um scheduled for the January uh full day, uh so that we can get all teachers at the same time. Uh I just wanna put a word out. Uh this is really for all schools. It's not just our high school, especially as we get parent teacher conferences coming up in a few weeks. Um just a reminder that if we can, you know, park within the scheduled spaces, the the line uh areas, uh it really does help a lot with traffic flow and and traffic pattern. Uh at each of our schools, I know space is limited, uh but it 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 doesn't help to have people blocking roadways so that we can't have uh any kind of traffic, but 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 of course, most importantly, emergency traffic. So um I just I definitely wanna uh help people. Um as we are unpacking our website, we're certainly learning a a few things. Uh there was some questions about our search feature by a parent. Uh the the search feature is a dedicated search feature per page on our website.
Hmm.
So if you search for something on that particular page, that's what you're going to get, is that word relative to that page in that site. So that's why there were some inconsistencies purportedly, that uh, you know, depending on where they were searching, they were getting a different answer. Um so that is something that we can either open up completely, and it can be a broad to this full site, um or we can keep it as we currently have it, which is um up by the page or by that site. Uh we started off small, so we can always, you know, open it up. It can go broader. Um so.
Is that okay? I mean, if I mean, I'm not really sure what somebody would look up. So if you're looking up uh discipline or something at a school, and you're saying, so if you're in that school, you'll just get the discipline policy of that school?
Correct. You'd get you'd get whatever whatever is on their page is relative to discipline.
But shouldn't they be typical?
The search?
Well, no, it like discipline. Shouldn't discipline be typical in schools, school or?
I would say developmentally, it's very typical, but there may be different steps at each school in terms of how things are handled. You know, it might go it might go to uh you know, it might vary just slightly because of staffing, uh in terms of who what the positions are and so forth. So it's it's gonna vary by building uh in that particular example, uh just by the nature of of staff. So. But I just I wanted people to understand uh the the uniqueness uh of the search feature. Just announcing parent guardian teacher conferences are coming up, so uh they are scheduled. This is kind of the odd part of our calendar. It's a very uh challenging aspect of November. Uh but they are November twelfth for a half day uh into the evening, and then November thirteenth uh for the full day, and that's, of course, following Veterans Day, uh which is a holiday. Uh I have in your packet information for R F K, uh for private day uh school in Lancaster, uh so that's on your consent agenda. We're still looking for parents uh to join our calendar committee. Uh it'd be great to have uh some parents um in in as part of the conversation. Uh and uh so in the past, we have, and we certainly want a good number of parents to be on that committee.
You know, speaking of the calendar committee, I met somebody from Cumberland, Rhode Island, and they were the first, she said, district to in the state of Rhode Island to eliminate the
Equal vacation or?
February vacation.
Uh-huh.
And I asked her, uh and I asked her how it went.
Mm-hmm.
And she said it was really difficult the first year. People are getting used to it. Now they're thinking about actually moving to a March vacation, but they're not sure they're gonna do it because of college. Have you heard of any districts in Massachusetts that are?
Taunton just moved. Um and I I believe this year is their full consolidation.
Auburn did two years ago.
And Auburn did, yeah.
My cousin teaches in Auburn, and she did two years ago.
So they eliminated February?
Yeah.
And how does that work?
I mean, how does it work?
Well, well, I don't know. I just meant as far as teaching, because it seems like right after Christmas, there's a lot, I mean, between the holidays and everything, between your March,
You eliminated.
it just seems like they're off a lot.
Right.
So that is.
That's one of the ration pieces of the rationale of.
Which is, well, you lose lose fun daily.
But there's all kinds of, it's contractual and.
Prosecco.
Well, according to Maureen, we didn't have February vacation until the energy crisis in seventies. They closed the schools because that was due to
That's been like
I know.
I know. I was very happy as a student to have that vacation.
A whole Christmas lifetime, you know.
And as a skier, I know I'm very happy to have that vacation currently.
Well, there you go. Sorry I brought it out, Michael.
Lots of good weekends, right, Michael?
That's okay. Maybe it comes in.
Michael, keep going.
But speaking of snow and just bringing up about school cancellations, uh so on our our new website, there will be a pop-up notice. In the past, we've used a banner. Uh so it'll be a pop-up notice now. It'll kind of google out each page, so our main site is not bookmarked. You won't have to worry about that if, you know, if you're a center school parent or a foreign source, it will pop up uh and go there, but we still continue to use the television and the radio stations as we as we have previously, although we're we're really kind of phasing out radio stations. They don't seem to be as uh useful anymore uh in terms of who uses them. Um.
You're still gonna do the call?
So we do the call to our own staff. We're we're not gonna do a call to parents, um and the reason being that um it's been a mixed result. I I it's not a scientific study, but essentially, parents who have elementary s- uh children didn't wanna get wak- uh uh awoken at, you know, five thirty in the morning.
Like the morning order?
Um so, you know, we have the electronic means, um and so it's available to them and.
So it's all on the website?
So it's it television, essentially television and and the website would be the two areas that I would go to.
And don't be busy. Okay.
Uh and we do our best to have it up, uh certainly decided by uh between that five and five-thirty timeframe.
Mm-hmm.
Uh there are those days where it's very tough, uh but um but we do have to get it done because of our our bus drivers who are driving here from other places. Uh and then uh get the notice out. Uh and 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 sometimes in for the public especially, we may make the call to our television stations at five-thirty, but because of their rotation, it's all computerized. We don't talk to actual real people.
Hmm.
It it may not get there until ten o'clock because they don't do a cycle reboot or something like that. So we don't have control after we make those calls to those uh stations. Uh so the website is really the best uh resource to get probably the multimedia information. Uh we had our last meeting, uh what ended up to be our our last meeting on the Foundation Budget Review Committee, which I uh serve on. Uh that was uh yesterday, Monday. Uh and so we have a draft report. Uh they're moving quick uh quickly to get a published report. Um and so hopefully that will be released sometime next week, actually. Um I've been in the schools. I was at the high school for a good part on Thursday last week, and I was at M R E in Luther Burbank on Tuesday and Center as well. Uh and I left out, actually, I was also at Florence Morgan on Tuesday. Um and then there's some feedback on some of the uh goals that I've been working on uh for my evaluation plan.
Thank you. Any questions on any of the items? Correspondence.
There's two items I have on too also, so you want to go ahead with, you you have any thoughts on it?
Yeah, just have a look. The afternoon?
Lynn, yours was honor roll.
Yeah, uh somebody called and they were concerned about um when we had talked last spring about honor roll
Mm-hmm.
and about alternatives to maybe getting rid of the honor roll and filling it with something else, and she just wanted to point to continue with that.
That's it.
Yes, we are, and we'll ha- uh probably have an announcement for November eighteenth, N R S D, and.
Oh, really?
No.
Really?
It's on our calendar, or at least we talked about it. I don't know. But yeah, cool. Makes up.
Oh, really? November eighteenth.
We have to be, we will not be doing anything different with the high school. It it's for a lo- number of reasons. It doesn't work out to do anything for the for the high school, and plus they're starting up and looking at uh standard-based recording, so it it makes sense to wait for their conversation. Um and so, but we will be doing.
Is that is that middle school or?
We'll just be doing middle school.
Okay.
And and it's really, we introduced last year how we were doing middle school, uh so it'll be more on the publishing side of things that we're making some changes.
Okay. Um, anything else, Lynn, Neil?
I do. Um so it I actually have correspondence that was sent, and I didn't enter this because it was just sent a little bit late for me to be able to do that this afternoon. It's about uh the soccer team at the high school. And um apparently, there's a parent that's questioning uh it's a little convoluted, but apparently what's happened is, um, well, I'll I'll read to you just uh the coach coming in, um I guess uh brought new uniforms to the kids that play soccer. Uh and the cost was approximately nine thousand dollars uh to do this. And um I guess the quest was to start some uh some different programs to try to generate some revenue. Um and so they tried raffle tickets and some other things for fundraising efforts. And uh and it looks like there's actually a shortfall in this fundraising effort, so there was a note that came out to the parent saying that they're going to have to basically write a check uh to cover the cost of the uniforms. Um and they're obviously not happy about that, because this isn't something, they're saying this isn't something that was disclosed that they would be responsible for this.
Boys' girls.
This is boys, I'm sorry. Um and so according to them, none of the information was provided upfront. They received two practice shirts and raffle tickets and then a jacket with no explanation um that was embroidered. And um while I was willing to pay fifty dollars out of my pocket to offset this unfortunate situation, I don't understand why we're now being asked for an additional hundred, which would bring the cost of the J V uh to two hundred fifty dollars for a program that offers fewer games than varsity, no opportunity to even use the turf field for the games. Uh and apparently, they also paid for uh some practice stuff that they don't even wear to practice uh either. So it's just kind of like a really weird situation, and they asked if I would bring this up
Sure. I'll look into it.
um tonight. So that actually led me to a second thing, because they said that they had sent um multiple emails to me at N R S D dot net.
Uh-huh.
And to some other members of the school committee, which I have, who soon haven't received this. Um and I didn't receive anything, so I don't know if the forwarding aspect of the N R C, N R S D is falling short, like if we're I'm just raising it as a flag.
I know. Who are the other members?
Yes.
Saying that if anyone el- if anyone else sent anything, we haven't responded, um you know, that may be one of the reasons.
Okay.
Is that Neil go to our Gmail account, the N R S D dot net?
It goes to whatever email you.
Pointy tier.
So it should be going to like my Comcast account.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Do you got any of it forward or you can't tell?
Um.
If you can tell, someone said you something at N R S D.
I can't tell, no. I can't honestly tell. Um, yeah.
Yeah, I would.
Did you get the notices from me that say the packet's ready?
Yes.
Does that use all N R S D emails for that?
Yep. I get I get as a matter of fact, I get everything from everyone here, um and from the administration and.
Yeah, okay.
Is it on, is it is it correct, is it correct on the website? Maybe.
I don't know. I'll check that out.
We'll look it up.
Check it out.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Right?
Yep.
Thank you, Neil.
Yeah.
Other correspondence, anything? And and Michael, Michael, you took care of our, Alita took care of the um the uh the website question?
Yes.
Yes, great.
Contacted Kathy on K F C. Contacted me back.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for following up on that. All right, consent agenda. Assuming that there, everybody's okay with the minutes? Any changes? No, good. Um, Mike, what are we doing about next meeting? What folks, what do you want to um try to reference this document, and you may have your own items um that you'd like us to touch on and discuss at the next meeting? Um, if there's nothing burning, then Michael and I will work on the agenda together.
Yeah, not aware of anything new that's not on that calendar.
So our next meeting would be three weeks, is that right?
The eighteenth of November? Right?
Yeah.
All right.
That's the one we're gonna.
Yes, eighteenth.
Right. Okay, um we do have one item of business that came up unexpectedly um since the agenda was posted. Um I received um Superintendent Woods' letter of resignation um effective June thirtieth, twenty sixteen, and um we need to vote to accept that, but before we And, um, we need to vote to accept that, but before we do that, I think, um, I want to thank you, Michael, um, on behalf of the school committee for your years of service, the contributions that you've made, and certainly your love for the students and your staff, so we really appreciate, um, your time here. If you want to say anything.
It's just been a great honor to serve, and I certainly, I live here, so I'll be continuing to s- serve in o- other capacities, I hope, um, for the children in the communities, uh, that I've come to call home.
Thank you. Um, does anyone want to move to accept Michael's resignation?
I'll move, I'm going to accept, um, Michael's, um, resignation, super term.
Effective?
Effective June thirty, two thousand fifteen.
Sixteen. Sixteen. Is there a second?
Oh, awesome.
Does anybody have any comments?
Can I just ask?
Do you have any? No, 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 no.
Sorry, you can't.
Does anybody have, in the committee, does anybody have any comments?
I'm sorry, I'm not.
Just me?
Thank you. All right. Um, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. All right, at this, uh, with that, we will not be going into an executive session, because there is no negotiation. And, um, does someone want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'm hopefully adjourned the meeting.
And do we have a second?
A second.
And all those in favor?
Two minutes.
Thank you.
I was just going to ask you.